Everybody ready?
I'm working on it.
Actually, I'm not. I haven't logged in yet now that I set these up and I didn't bother to. All right, let's try that again. Give me a second. Stop.
There we go.
The echoes remind me to shut those two things off.
Ah, we're good to go. Frank, are you up and running down there?
Yep, I see. I don't see there yet.
Oh, let me dial back in. Chill out. There we go.
We've got new chairs.
Yeah.
I guess it's been a while since we met in this room, huh? Probably a month?
Something like that.
I'm ready when you're ready.
You ready, Pete?
I am.
You ready? Christine's ready?
I'm ready.
All right, everybody's ready. Okay, everybody in the audience ready? All right, okay, all right. Well, welcome to the April fifteenth edition of the Medfield Select Board meeting. I'm sitting here thinking a little bit. We started this official year off on April Fool's Day and then we picked the normal income tax due day for our second date. I think the twenty-ninth is not controversial unless somebody knows anything about historical events that we shouldn't be mentioning it in public meetings or anything like that. But outside of that, I think we're okay. First, for anybody who is, we have a number of people in the audience, which is great. I think our, I think our audience has been growing as our Select Board meetings have become more and more entertaining. No, 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 it's been, it's a trend. It's a multi-year trend. It's more and more entertaining. So we're delighted to see people here, but we recognize there are still people who tune in on Medfield TV. So for those of you who want to know how to do that, if you go to the town website, download the Select Board meeting agenda. At the very top of that agenda, there will be a link to the Zoom connection, so you can connect by Zoom. And there's also phone numbers if you just want to call in for that. A couple of things for especially people here in the audience. This is a meeting that's being video recorded. It is being recorded, but it's also, I think, being live, it's a live stream as well, right? So it's being broadcast live through Medfield TV. So you all at times might find yourselves on cameras. If you do speak during the meeting, we have a microphone that appears to do absolutely nothing. Whether it's there, is that the only one that we have now, that one there? Or that one, right. So you have a choice for the two microphones. When you speak in it, your voice will not be amplified. It's simply to pick up the audio feed from Medfield TV. So it's working. It just doesn't seem like it's working. At this time, I'd like to take a minute for us to remember the members of our armed services who are serving worldwide to protect our country. Thank you. Okay, the first appointment we have is a vote to sign the Fire Chief Employment Agreement with Bill DeKing. I would point out for any of you who are watching the news, you could actually have seen him testing and being trialed for his new position live on TV this afternoon. Unfortunately, for not a good reason in terms of the incident of a house fire. And we ought to remember the people whose house was burned. But I will say that I thought you did a very good job as the spokesperson for the town when you're being interviewed. So does Bill come up and make his plea for us to sign the contract?
He has already done that in executive session. You can now vote to sign it in open session.
You can make a speech first if you'd like. Okay. You could try, you can try to talk us out of it or into it.
After today, you sure?
For people who don't know what, how the process works with contracts that the Select Board's involved with, we actually negotiate the contracts in closed session. It's obviously a negotiation of contract is a sensitive thing to do. However, once we are satisfied that we and the person we're negotiating with have reached an agreement, that contract gets memorialized in the actual official action of awarding that contract or agreeing to that contract occurs in open session, which is what we're doing tonight. So Eileen, any comments?
No, other than I'm thrilled that we have Bill on board. And as we were just saying, I mean, today was a perfect example of his leadership. I don't know if anyone caught him on Channel twenty-five, but Fox News had him front and center. And I know that all the accolades we've been hearing from the various residents and folks that were there, they're just happy that everyone is safe and that you did a fabulous job. So I look forward to having you on board here.
Nothing special, just thanks for, I thought you did a good job on TV, so congratulations. Thanks for being our new chief.
I'm pretty sure everybody in the room kind of knows already how the Select Board's going to vote here, but can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay.
All right, thank you. An official ceremony in early May, right?
Official ceremony in May, but we also have Chief, Acting Chief DeKing has numerous grant applications tonight. So if we can do those all at once, I think he's had a long day and we'd like to send him home.
Have you been doing something else today, Bill?
Is there a Patagonia rain jacket in there? I know I'll forget if I don't get it out.
I've spent all of about ten minutes.
Hold one there's, there's, I'm getting sign language and I'm not really.
Yes, we have changed that.
They're faster.
I don't get a police car?
I know. I'm sorry. Fire engine red.
See, when I read it, I said, I never realized that the Fire Chief's vehicle was a police car, but it kind of makes sense.
I carried it in. It's probably in my office.
Chris, is there anything else you'd like to point out?
Sorry, Bill, I tried.
It's negotiations, all right?
Okay. We are starting, I think, with the first of two grants for the Fire Department. And the first one is a, we're voting to accept and authorize the town administrator to sign the firefighter safety equipment grant award contract for nine thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars.
Yep, so that's the grant that I discussed with you guys during, during the interview process. We're going to buy new helmets, new boots for, for the members. Each of those items can only last ten years, and we have some that are just expiring now, so that'll help us replace those.
Okay, questions?
Absolutely not.
Those uniforms, those things are still made with PFAS, are they?
They're less PFAS, I guess they could call them now. They're working on improving those. But we, yeah, we don't have much of a choice.
And I had one trivia question for you. In the listing of the boots and the helmets, in parentheses next to it, it says structural. And I would have thought structural is having to do with the building.
Well, it's structural for structural firefighting. So, so we have, we have boots that, we have wildland boots that we just got in a grant last year. We have station boots. These are the boots and the helmets that we wear into, into a house fire. So they're made special, they're built up.
Okay. I was trying to figure out why that was the category. They are part of the firehouse, so I guess, I was, I was going in the other direction that it was the building, the fire station. Okay, got it. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, first one passes. The second one is a vote to accept the Student Awareness of Fire Education SAFE Program Grant of forty-seven hundred dollars and the Senior SAFE Program Grant of twenty-two hundred dollars and authorizing the town administrator to sign the grant contract.
Yep, so this is the grant that we have applied for and received for at least the last six or seven years. Started with Mike when he was in fire prevention. This allows us to go to the senior center, work with the seniors by handrails forum, slip and fall mats, that sand for seniors program. Allows us to go into the schools, send, send members into the schools, meet with the kids, read to the kids, do fire safety things and buy all the hats and the stickers and all that good fun stuff and help with the open house and that type of stuff.
No questions.
No questions. So moved.
I had, no, I had a question. The only, the only question, so we, we have, it's interesting, all fire, fire grants apparently have the word SAFE in them. So we have a SAFER grant, which is a federal grant, which is still twisting in the wind on exactly when or if the federal funds will be made available. Does the organization, is there any similar risk to these grants not showing up? I realize the SAFER grant was for hiring people.
Right, right.
So there's, it was more to it. But is there any connection between this, other than that they both use the acronym SAFE?
No, no, they're not related at all. The SAFE grant, the student one and the senior SAFE one, those are state level grants where the SAFER is a FEMA grant.
Okay, okay. I think Pete moved the motion. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Okay.
And then we have one last, and that's the ambulance.
Contract that came across this afternoon.
Oh, the ambulance. Just looking for the number that that one was.
It should be nineteen now.
Nineteen now.
Oh, yeah, the Bulldog fire.
Okay, the nineteen is a vote to sign the contract with Bulldog Fire Apparatus, Inc. for the purchase of a new ambulance and associated equipment for four hundred thirty-four thousand one hundred twenty-three dollars and forty-eight cents, subject to town meeting appropriation.
So the reason, reason we have this on for tonight is the, the company has slotted a number of ambulances available. So if we can agree to a contract prior to town meeting, with the understanding that it's based on approval at time, town meeting, we can get, lay claim to one of those slots. They have four slots remaining. And if we, if we get one of those slots, we can, we can get the new ambulance late to, late summer next year. If not, we're looking three, three years out on that. Then, and the other, another, another part of that is May first, they're going up six percent on their price. So if we, if we're allowed to sign that ahead of time with, with the contract we sent over today, our standard contract form. Frank, you want to speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, it's just the standard contract form that Mo or any other department would use to buy a vehicle or piece of equipment. We did insert language, basically worked with Mark to come up with language that specifically called out that it was subject to appropriation by town meeting. So I think we just tried to cover our bases that way.
So it's, it's just a matter of if we can sign it before May first, so we can, A, get the slot and B, save some money.
It sounds like there's no penalty. If you, if you did that, you got the slot, you can't, you had to back out. Not, not that I anticipate that would happen, but if you had to back out, there was no penalty, there's probably people standing at one end who weren't having to.
Right, right. And that's, that's part of the contract that Frank had sent over to them.
Well, the only thing I cleared with Frank is when you look at the contract, there's a whole back half that's another contract looking for signatures. But this is just looking at their contract. We're going off ours.
Right, so.
She says specs.
Yes, that's the specs, that's saying, the first contract is saying, okay, if we get to town meeting and it goes through town meeting and gets approved at town meeting, then we get into their contract. And, and not, not the contract, but the specs and all that information.
Yeah, so this matters, this page matters, but all this other rhetoric about payment methods and whatever, because we're not paying for it or receiving it. That's, okay. That's what I was concerned about when I first got it.
Yep.
There was something in the contract that was like an extra, but I didn't quite understand what it was. Can you just tell me what that?
The stretcher?
Okay. I don't remember what it was, but it was like fifty thousand or something.
Yeah, so, so the ambulance has a set price. There's a new stretcher that we need with that, which the current stretcher we have that we'll be trading in and getting rid of is eighteen years old and they, they won't service it anymore because it's beyond their serviceable.
Pulls out of the.
Yeah, the cot that, that, that people.
Wow, I wouldn't have ever guessed that those were that expensive.
So they're a specialty piece of equipment that, once you add that specialty term on there.
Well, that's why they work so well, I guess. They, for, for a big piece of equipment, it comes in and out pretty easily.
Yeah, so that's what, that's what that.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question. It might be for you, Christine. As I recall, the question is what the funding source is for this ambulance. I think it's the ALS revolving fund, right?
So on this, it's actually the ambulance revolving fund. So we still have two funds. We're trying to transition the ambulance to the ALS. If you recall, earlier this year, we had tried to do that for this year's town meeting, but given that we're spending these funds out of that, we're leaving it for another year. So I think ninety-eight percent of it is coming from the ambulance revolving fund through the capital budget. And the remainder, depending on the trade-in, will be from the ALS revolving fund. So that will offset it, but I think it's about twenty thousand.
Almost, almost twenty thousand.
Yes, it'll be twenty thousand offset from there.
And the reason I asked that question for, to make sure I was right, for people here in the public, but also people listening in, it's important, this is a very expensive capital expenditure, but it's the Fire Department's own emergency services that we have that has enabled us to do this. When we, when we were first looking at introducing ALS, we were sort of hoping that maybe we would generate enough revenue to sort of offset maybe the extra cost of having another ambulance or something like that. But in fact, the way that this has unfolded through, I think, both through the, the demand for the services, but also through some skillful financial management and organization things in the Fire Department. We're at a point where something like a new ambulance is being funded through the revenues that are generated for the town, through the delivery of the emergency services that I think everybody in town is glad we have. So I wanted to make sure I was right about that. But that's a, for those who are looking at that number, it's a big number. And it's a big number that's being covered basically not on our tax letting.
Okay. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right. That's it.
All right, thank you. Get some rest.
No departing speeches or. Thank you, Bill. Okay, anything else we need to move forward? Sign that. There's the town moderator, right on time. Yes, your choice, either one you'd prefer.
Fellow town meeting enthusiasts, how we doing?
Good.
Excited?
Rallying the troops.
Take it away.
It's your show.
So it is, it's actually ours. We've talked quite a lot about this week. So this is a discussion of whether or not we would like to reduce the quorum for the annual meeting. So by charter, by bylaw, we're at two hundred fifty for our quorum. We are still allowed with notification procedures and discussion and agreement with the moderator to reduce that to whatever we'd like. It can't go below twenty-five, obviously. But that is something we wanted to put on the table. We would like you to be interested in talking about it this evening.
So I'd like to clarify whether we have one question or two questions. There is one question, I think for sure, that is around, do we want to lower the quorum for the upcoming town meeting? And then there's potentially a second question, do we want to just lower the quorum as a policy for town meetings? And that, I think, requires, is it a charter? That's a more.
That's where it is, whether it's in a bylaw or the charter.
So that would require a charter.
We would have to have a discussion about that, but that would be a next year town meeting discussion.
But that's why I'm, that's why I'm asking now, because if we wanted to, just, my question is really, are we talking about that second question tonight? Or are we only talking about whether we should lower quorum for this upcoming town?
I think we're just limited to.
You can only do it a meeting at a time under this legislation.
We're just having the discussion about this year's town meeting.
I'm not trying to change them both. I'm asking the que, here's what I'm thinking. So let's for a second say, okay, we'll lower the quorum for this meeting. And then the summer goes by and the fall goes by, and we have a very similar conversation to what we had about a month ago around the quorum for the 2026 town meeting. We're going to be facing the same change. We're going to be making a permanent change. And I'm fine for us to say, no, we're not talking about that tonight. But I'm pointing out that we will be in the same spot a year from now, asking the same question if we don't figure out whether we even want to have that second conversation.
Well, I think the difference is we're all concerned because there's no school vote. There's no, there's no controversial vote that everyone comes up for, right? So we, this, this year is a very, to make sure, we need to get the budget clear. There's a few allocations and transfers, but it's really just company business, town business. So the concern is people like, it doesn't affect me, I don't need to go. So I understand the inquiry of, do we lower it? I don't think tonight we need to worry about years going forward. I think my own personal opinion is short term. Let's just worry about 2025.
I think I can help there as well in, in that I don't disagree that it's, you know, if it's something that is worth discussing, we should do it soon. But the, the town moderator's involvement is only with respect to the, the changing it year to year. So I, I wouldn't even need to be there if we're talking about.
But I mean, the reason I'm bringing it, and I'm going to, we're going to cut this part off very quickly here. The reason I'm bringing up while you are here is because the way I'm looking at this is if we're saying, well, a year like this where there's nothing con, there's no good reason right now, like we had with COVID, to lower the quorum. The only reason, I think, is the one you mentioned, I go, well, there is nothing really controversial in the town meeting, so we could lower it so that we don't run the risk of not, not getting to a quorum. That would be true of any year that we don't have that kind of thing. And you don't need, it doesn't matter in the years where you do. So you'll generate the, you'll exceed the two fifty quorum on the important years. The only thing we're really talking about is should we lower it? So on the less controversial years, whenever they occur, if we had a lower quorum, we would run the less risk on a continuing basis of failing to be able to muster a quorum. That's the issue I'm putting on the table. That's, I'm happy to end that discussion right here, but I'm pointing out, if twelve. putting out a permanent change for bylaw. That's all I needed to know. Okay, got it. So the only question is, should we drop it? Should we drop it, and what should we drop it to?
I would mirror what we did a year or two ago, which is 150.
Can I raise this question? Who, who determines what's controversial and what's not controversial?
So I think I can answer that. I act, that's not my rationale for bringing this, whether it's controversial or not controversial, or who's going to come out to the meeting, right?
The question they said.
Exactly. But that's why I'm making a clarification for why I brought it forward. I actually think we're going to go low quorum out of the water this year, because we have these tremendous high school interns who have been talking to everybody about coming to town meeting. So I actually anticipate this isn't going to be an issue, but some of us have PTSD from when we could not hold an annual town meeting. And the expense of that meeting is not something we, we can do, nor the getting everybody fired up for our second night of the Emmys. So we would like to just keep it, that, so my rationale for bringing it forward is controversial, not controversial, is just, there might not be a lot of topics that everybody is really excited about coming out to town meeting. So.
I've literally had residents say to me, ah, do I have to come to town meeting this year? I'm like, wow, you should come to a town meeting every year.
Do you understand my comment about who, who decides what's controversial?
Well, it's just, it's not, Bill, it's just, it's, it's when you look at it, there's nothing that jumps out and says, is this going to be money to get a school, I mean, even though there's money being allocated for feasibility, there's, there's none that just draws people's attention, like whether it's the water, the wells from a few years ago, people wanted to make sure they were heard, whether it's people with the dogs, we had an active conversation last year about that. So there are times when we know it's going to draw a conversation, and then there's years, like three years ago, my first year on the select board, we didn't make quorum that night. We had to go the next night, which I get what you're saying. We don't want to do that again.
I'll take your batteries out here.
I mean, for me, town meeting, all the articles are exciting. We've spent the last eight months working on these. These are incredibly exciting. We are town meeting mirrors in this building. We're super excited for this. We don't understand why everybody, why we don't get, you know, 8,000 people at town meeting. So it's definitely not, not the concept.
I, I don't have a problem with, with changing the number. It's just the description of why you're changing it. I mean, having been, I think, I've probably been to the last 30 or 40 town meetings and everything else. And the one that always surprises me is the thing you think would have the least impact is the one that turns out to be discussed the most, whether it's the dogs, or whether it's bull hunting, or whatever. I could, I could list them all. So again, it's, if you're going to change it, change it not because it's non-controversial.
Maybe, maybe a better way to say it is, we're concerned about low voter turnout.
That's, but you do, you do understand my point, though, that's all. I mean, I'm not objecting to you changing it, I'm just.
So Bill, from my perspective, when we dropped, after we didn't make quorum, and we dropped the quorum, everybody, there were two, there were a lot of people in town that were convinced we were up to something, and we wound up with a, with an actual turnout on the second meeting that far blew past the original quorum. So there's a piece of me that says, well, the lower we go, the more convinced people are, we're up to something, and they'll show up at the town meeting and make sure we don't get away with it. So it doesn't.
I'm taking Medfield insider messages.
Yeah, so to your, to your point, I don't actually know that it's a matter of, for me, it's not a matter of, oh, it's not controversial, no one's going to show up. It's like, if you lower the quorum, they're going to show up to make sure they can keep your, their eye on you, which is a good thing, because then we get more people. But that's just.
So when Christine asked me about this, I was in favor, but I was in favor for the reason that Christine expresses, which is that it's a shame to, to hold, to plan for a town meeting and then not have enough people show up. So if we lower the quorum, then we're, we're more likely to be able to go forward.
As I said, I'm not objecting to changing it, I'm just, was.
Noted.
Relative to my comment, these are the two more rational voices about that issue.
And I already complimented Mike, by the way, on his last performance. I thought it was a great job. So anyway.
We'll see if we can repeat. No promises.
So, so it's, the general consensus that we're in favor of reducing the quorum. There's a number on the table of 150. Does anybody have any other opinions about what that number needs to be?
So we are not going to actually vote on that tonight. We are, we are going to publish a notice in the paper. This is just to, to start the initial conversation. Now we need to publish a notice in the paper, that you're intending to lower it and what the number is, and then we will actually vote on it at the next meeting.
So my question remains.
Yes.
150 is our segment.
Yeah, let's do 150.
I'm good with 150. We good with 150? 150 is the number?
Sounds good to me.
So we're not voting on it tonight. We are simply, have demonstrated a consensus between the select board, a unanimous vote on the, oh, Diane.
I'm just wanting to point out, observation-wise, that you actually will be back with a, I told you so, because if it's a bylaw, it won't take effect until the following year, so next year we'd still have to.
I can live with that.
We'll discuss this later.
Okay, so the sense is, we have actually unanimous opinion that we would like to lower the quorum to 150 for the upcoming May town meeting, agreement between the town moderator and the select board.
So agreed.
With, I think, an intent, at least at this point, that before the next town meeting, we would, we would consider a potential bylaw change that might make a permanent, for argument's sake, but now, might make that a permanent change for future town meetings.
And this is when we begin the 2026 annual town meeting.
First one.
First one.
All right.
Great.
Want to talk about anything else?
Anything else?
I talk about town meeting all, all time, every time, from here until on May 5th.
I will, I will express one opinion in terms of your preparation of the town meeting, to the point that people don't show up for non-controversial agendas. People also dump, sometimes don't stay for.
Understood.
Articles that they, that a good number of people, you know, if, if the ones that everybody cares about aren't the ones toward the end, there are times when an article at the end can get not really a fair hearing. I can think of, there was a COA article a couple of years ago, that was, I think people were just fatigued. A bunch of people left, the ones that were left just were not in a very agreeable mood, and it didn't go anywhere. I think there were, even last year, probably the last article, I bet you, a lot of people don't even know what it was, because they were gone by the time we got to that article.
So, so for this year, we will have a set agenda. That agenda will be available, I'm hoping, on display for everybody, and I, I think you'll be happy with the order, in that respect.
You've got a question, before he leaves, you've got a question for Mike.
It's a good thing you watch, it's right here, and I don't see. So this is a question coming in from Jeff Hyman, One Metacomet Street. Medfield residents should participate in town meeting regardless of articles. Can Moderator Pastore address the negative effects to reducing the town meeting quorum listed below? Number one, reduced representation, which means fewer voices are involved in decision-making, potentially leading to outcomes that don't reflect the broader community's interests. Two, risk of manipulation with fewer people required to make decisions, a small organized group could exert disproportionate influence over town policies. Three, legitimacy concerns. Some residents may feel that decisions made with a lower quorum lack legitimacy, leading to disputes or dissatisfaction.
I, I always appreciate Mr. Hyman's comments, and, you know, his, his spirit about a town meeting, and I agree, I would love for more people to, to be there. You know, I think what we're talking about is to try to ensure that town meeting actually happens, and happens in the most efficient manner. But when we're talking about numbers, I mean, there are 9,000 voters eligible in Medfield, and we're talking about the difference between 250 and 150. So, you know, just raw numbers-wise and percentage-wise, if we're concerned about legitimacy, I, I don't think there's a difference, a qualitative difference in 250 versus 150.
And I also want to point out that lowering the quorum is just, is still the minimum.
Right.
We, we want, you know, I'd love for 5,000 people to come, although I'd have to work on overflow, we need to talk about that. But I, I, this is just the, the minimum amount to actually hold the meeting. And I know there's a comment in there about non-controversial articles, and isn't paying our employees and our teachers important. And I couldn't say yes enough, and that's why I'm concerned about the, the quorum, is, is the budget.
Non-controversial articles doesn't mean inconsequential articles.
Right, yes.
If, if people are all in agreement that our employees should be paid, that's a non-controversial article of consequence. So.
So obviously, people have taken my statement out of context. If we don't have quorum, and we can't hold town meeting, we can't run this town. Like, our budget has to be approved. We can't have a little pow-wow, and we approve the budget. The residents of this town have to come out and vote. We have seen, unfortunately, within the last three years, residents were apathetic, they didn't show up, we had about 180 or somewhere around there. And that's, that's a fact. And that's sad. That's beyond sad. So the fact of the matter is, there are a lot of people, they're spending a lot of time getting the budgets aligned, shifting monies around so we can afford to do certain things in this town for the next 12 months. So it's, it's, the meeting has to take place. I'd love to have the quorum at 750, but we know that's not going to happen. Now, we thought 250 was a good number, and we're not getting people coming out. And there's a lot of reasons. I have said, and I will stick to, when there are topics that tend to be volatile, people come out, because they want to make sure their opinions expressed. There's not a lot of opinion about budgets, because otherwise the warrant meetings would be packed, when the warrant's going over every one of those budgets. So it's just a statement of fact that we, we want people, we want our residents to come out. Like, when this one woman said to me, do I really need to come? I was like, ah, yeah. I mean, like, you're, you're one of the residents, and this budget matters to you, everyone should be coming to this meeting.
Right. But we need to conduct the business of the town.
Yeah.
Do you think by lowering the number, something you said, that if people feel they need a small number, unless people are likely to come?
Does that even matter?
What's that? More, when we lower it, the more show up.
Well, because of what Jeff said in his comments, is.
The apathy, my votes aren't going to matter, we'll get 150 now.
Well, but here's the problem, is we, we, three years ago, thought everyone would at least get 250, not 300, and we, the fact of the matter is, we didn't. And that, that really has a negative impact on this town. We have to hold the meeting again the next night, and if we don't get these budgets approved, in theory, this town shuts down. And, and so if people are listening to this message tonight, it's one night out of the year where you actually get a chance to have your voice heard. And I would like to think that every resident wants their voice heard. But unfortunately, we're seeing fewer and fewer, look at our town election. Like, there was very little turnout, there was very little people running for spot. I don't know how to change that, but what I do know is there are way too many people, especially to my left and to my right, that have spent a ton of time making sure that we can be in place to have a fiscal 26. So if people hear me and go, you know, Eileen says it's not important, no, it's very important, but because it doesn't impact each individual, because it's not a big matter to, like, like, again, there are certain, like, when senior senate wanted to get voted on, when we would do certain school votes, when we did the dog, when we did, well, wells, there are certain things that draw people out. When it's just the numbers, it doesn't tend to draw people out. That's just unfortunate.
Mark, do you have a comment?
Yeah, the flip side as well is, is you have to maintain the quorum. So if, if you have a high number, and you have the quorum to begin with, and everybody takes off because they're tired or whatever, and you've dropped below, and somebody challenges it, then whatever business is left is left in limbo.
Right. And that actually happened a couple of years ago. I heard, I know that Scott was a little concerned with, like, it was really thinning out, and we still had two or three warrant articles to cover.
As long as nobody calls it, you just proceed along.
You know, the, go ahead, Kristi, did you have some?
I have a quick question for Mike, while you guys are done, just basic.
I'll make one last editorial comment about this, that the, you know, some towns have gone to representative town meeting. My guess is that's because towns of a certain size wind up with citizens who collectively just don't want to have to put the time into it, so you go to a representative town meeting. We, I've re-looked at that, I don't think we're anywhere close to doing it, but to be, personally, I've always said that we effectively have the best kind of a representative town meeting. If you show up at town meeting, you didn't have to run for a position, you didn't have to get people to vote for you, you don't have to even spend time hearing what they think, so you can represent them. If we have 9,000 voters, and let's, and if we got 500 to show up, that would be an incredible turnout for town meeting. But think about that. 500 out of a 9,000 voter pool is one out of 18, which says that if you show up at the town, and we, we don't get that, we get more like half that. If you show up, and you're one of the, you cast your vote, you are representing 18 people out of that 9,000, not just statistically. So basically, if you want, if, you know, if you think representative town meeting might be a good idea, and you don't want to go through the hassle of having to put that whole institution in, show up! You'll be voting for at least 10 or 20 people, just because you're there, and you're one of the, the 5 to 10% that did show up.
Speaking to the choir here.
Okay. Chris?
Just a clarifying question for Mike, if that's okay. You had mentioned an agenda, having an agenda for the meeting?
Yes.
Is that going to be available before the meeting, or is that going to be at, you said at?
It'll be available at the meeting.
At the meeting, okay. All right. Thank you.
Have to show up to find out.
That's an incentive to make me quorum.
Are we still going, or?
Yeah, just, um.
You're not going to, it's not going to make a difference.
We will ask you to identify yourself in your address.
I understand. Dick Chau, Jay Juniper. I have a general agreement with everyone here about democracy and making it work, and being representative town meeting, it's important. I remember some town meetings where we had singers, we had the band playing, we had sparks of interest. So if we can't sell it on the, on the articles, then let's sell it as, come, do your civic duty, and hear some of Medfield's finest band members, or singers, or, you know, something from Medfield that represents the great things that Medfield has to offer. That's all.
Great, no, thank you. And we will be having a Medfield High student singing the National Anthem. As far as anything else, nothing is, is planned this year. I actually find that when I talk to folks, one of the draws to actually going to town meeting is to have it shorter, not longer. So I, I think we have a, you know, there's a delicate balance between adding things and also adding time where people have to, have to stay.
Okay. We had sufficient discussion of that question to be prepared to put that public notice out there. Okay. Well, thanks, thanks to everyone for listening, participating. I hope you found it interesting. It was, I think it actually was an important discussion. Hey, Mike, Mike, thanks for, looking forward to seeing you in another, less than a month. Okay. Next item on the agenda, Emily Lowney. Is, assume this is on the agenda, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Emily Lowney to request a.
Emily is here.
Okay, oh. To request a vote to sign the letter in support of Medfield's application for municipal decarbonization planning assistance.
And Emily should be joining us right now.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Um, I know I had come to you before about the decarbonization roadmap grant application, and I thought everything was all set, but the DOER did ask for an additional letter supporting the application. It was really just, probably my experience with completing these, that, just an additional letter that they need stating that the town is committed to meeting the requirements to become a climate leader community within the next year. So a draft of the letter was included in the materials, and I think, hopefully, the most updated draft, I don't know if you've seen that yet.
You should have it in front of you.
Okay, yep.
Yeah. They have it in front of them, Emily.
Yeah, it just states the ones that we've already completed, is that we're an existing green community. We have already established a local body, the Energy Committee, to advise on clean energy initiatives. We've committed to eliminate or offset onsite fossil fuel used by 2050, and we've adopted the zero emissions vehicle first policy. And then the requirements that we still need to meet with, within the next year, would be creating this decarbonization roadmap, and then adopting the Opt-In Specialized Code. And then I just added the language that, with the specialized code, we can't promise that we're going to adopt it at this time, because the best that we can do is say that Medfield Energy Committee's going to bring it to town meeting in 2026, and then the town will vote on it.
So I just want to confirm, number four, adopt a zero emissions vehicle first policy. That's the one we talked about, where we, we will, we, how did the phrasing go that Penny presented to us? We, we may review, but we're not forced to buy certain vehicles if it's not, doesn't fit, the budget doesn't fit.
Right, it has to be cost-effective, the budget, infrastructure, and we have approved that.
Okay.
Perfect, yeah.
That's it. Pete?
I think this is an excellent idea, and I think we should send this letter.
Emily, I'm, again, you, you did a great job last year at the time you're here, and I didn't want to be the one that's pushing back. But my issues on the letter, even revised,
that.
Okay.
Perfect, yeah.
That's it. Pete?
I think this is an excellent idea and I think we should send this letter.
Emily, I'm, again, you, you did a great job last year at the time you're here and I didn't want to be the one that's pushing back, but my issues on the letter, even revised, is that it's not correct. Number three, commit to eliminate or offset onsite fossil fuel use by 2050. There, there has, this is just a statement of fact, it's not an expression of opinion. The town is not committed to doing that. If, if you have, if you can point out a point where the town has committed to eliminating or offsetting onsite fossil fuel by 2050, you have to tell me where that happened. The only commitment that the town has made is in the town meeting when the town committed to supporting the state in its efforts, when it was, this is the Tom Cap article, the town committed to supporting the state in its efforts to achieve the net zero, net zero by 2050. That's our commitment in terms of what we've actually done. So that, that's point one. Point two on the number six, adopting the opt-in specialized building code. The lead into five and six are this will confirm that the town of Medfield is committed to meeting the remaining climate leader community requirements, which presumably one of those is adopting the opt-in specialized building code. We aren't, nobody's made that commitment. We haven't even had a discussion of the opt-in specialized building code. To me, the timing for a letter here would be after the op, the specialized building code has come before the town to commit to it. So what I'm looking at is I'm the guy signing this thing and I'm saying this is actually not a true statement. And I'm kind of, I'm kind of possessive about my signature.
I think that it's kind of like the chicken or the egg because we can't apply for the grant if we don't complete the application and we can't move to the next step until we do the decarbonization roadmap either. I mean, I had also, I don't know if you're able to promote Kelly Brown from DOE, I think she was going to be here tonight too, because it's really just, we're trying to fulfill what the Department of Energy Resources wants without promising something that we can't promise. And my understanding is that the DOE just wants this. They want us to, if we're going to bring it to town meeting in a year, say that. So that's what I'm trying to say.
Well, Kelly Brown does look like she's here and what, I guess what I would ask for in response is I'd like Kelly Brown to tell us how we can word this letter that doesn't require me to sign a false statement. I'd be more than happy to sign it, but I, I want it to be an accurate statement of where we're at, not, not a statement that makes it look like we're somewhere that we aren't really at right now.
Emily should be joining us now.
We could change the wording where it says the town is committed to meeting and instead say something like the town intends to, something, something more like aspirational, I guess.
Explore.
If we said we were committed to presenting the, the opt-in specialized building code for the town to consider, that's easy. But that's where the commitment would come in.
Yeah, if I can interject, so I've been working with Medfield since 2010. I helped the town become a green community. Medfield at the time also applied for similar assistance, looking at becoming a green community. So I know the wording definitely implies the commitment. We know that the town cannot predict an outcome at town meeting. All the, all it's saying is basically that the town is going to look to bringing the specialized energy code and putting it on the warrant for town meeting. There's no commitment for, you know, how the vote's going to go, that it's going to be adopted. I've been to plenty of town meetings. I know you can't do that, otherwise you'd play the lottery.
So if we can...
Definitely, all you're doing is saying that you're going to look at the process and you're going to be looking to bring the specialized energy code by putting it as an article on the town meeting warrant. That's the commitment.
Okay. That part's okay.
Yep. And I can say that, you know, we've been offering this municipal decarb roadmap assistance. Emily's been working really hard to get all your questions answered to multiple other communities. You have some neighboring communities that are already in the pipeline.
Okay.
And they have not, you know, they're doing the same thing. They're looking at putting the article on and they've, they've the same commitment. No commitment to adopting.
Yeah. If we can say that, then that's accurate and I'm good with it. So that's, that takes care of the first one.
You can put that, but that's all we're looking for. So that would be the commitment you would be making.
So we might have to reword that one.
So we'll just rewrite the whole letter and we won't say anything about committing to meeting the requirements. We'll just say committed to bringing to town meeting in 2026.
That, yeah, I...
Will that be acceptable?
Yeah, I mean, is, well, as far as I'm concerned, that looks like it's headed in the right direction. But I guess the real question is that, is that an acceptable explanation from the standpoint of the state, the green communities? If that's what we say, we don't talk about meeting a requirement.
Where you're not committing to adopting the specialized code.
Right.
Is basically what I'm saying.
I think that's Gus's problem is the words committed to meeting the requirements.
Right.
Meeting. It's the meeting, that's the word.
Yeah.
You've already met four requirements.
Yeah.
Right?
I mean, if meeting the requirement, if the requirement itself is simply that the town needs to commit to looking at the specialized energy code, then I have no problem at all. The way it's worded right now, it sounds like we're committed to meeting the requirement to, to adopt the specialized energy code, like the decision's been made. I'm saying we haven't even talked about it yet.
But Gus, even though it says specifically that the Energy Committee expects to bring this to a town meeting, though, I don't think anyone would read this letter and say afterwards, but you committed because we said right in there that we were bringing it to town meeting and everyone knows that no one can guarantee a vote at downtown meeting.
Well, nobody can even guarantee an article makes it to town meeting, but the part about the many, the Energy Committee expecting to bring it, that's fine. It's the, it was actually the paragraph in front of five is the place that it says, "We confirm that the town is committed to meeting the remaining client." So it's actually not the item, it's the, it's the predecessor paragraph that says we're confirming that we're committed to doing this. That's, that's where I have the problem.
How about change meeting to addressing?
Yeah, that might even work. Addressing, let's see, count, the, confirm that the town of Medfield is committed to addressing the remain, yeah, actually, that would do it.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. So change that not to meeting, but make it addressing. That solves my problem there. So, so between that and a rewording of six, we're, we're past that hurdle for me.
Okay.
I want to go back up to three. I want to talk about three because this is saying we are committed to eliminating or offsetting onsite fossil fuel use by 2050. When the, the Tom Cap article came before the town meeting, I spoke against that article. I was, I was definitely a minority voice. But the point that I made when I spoke against it is don't let anyone tell you after the fact, if you adopt this article, that you have committed to doing anything. Don't let them tell you that you signed a blank check because we've never, we've made a commitment to support the state in its pursuit of net zero goals by 2050. And I think that's a good faith commitment. I think that's a good thing for us to do. Whether we get all the way to that pure net zero by 2050, from an environmental standpoint, we're going to be headed in a direction that I'm sure happy with. But the issue that I had with Tom Cap, and I still have with Tom Cap, is it's a philosophy document. It lays out a framework for how to think about getting there. There is no clear action, there is no clear responsibility, there's no clear commitment of money. So when we say we're committed to doing something and there's no dollars that back up that commitment, then it's not really a commitment, it's sort of a philosophical sentiment that says, "Yeah, we want to do that." And, and we can get out of this easy. We could just say we're doing that here in 2025. Some of us won't be on this earth by 2050, so even if they wanted to come after us, they wouldn't be able to get us. But my, but my point, I know it sounds like I'm trying to trash this thing, but you understand the point I'm making is when we say we make a commitment, we actually need to commit to something. And we're not. We're just kind of saying the words because that's what you're supposed to say and there's no teeth to it. So that's, that's my objection to the third one. If we simply said that we, you know, if we reiterated what the resolution was in that Tom Cap article, which was, I don't have the exact words, but it was something that we're committed to supporting the state in its pursuit of the 20, of the net zero by 2050 goals, yes, I'm good with it. Because that's what I think we truly committed to. See what I'm saying?
Here, I have some wording here.
Okay.
From the article, "The town of Medfield supports a goal of eliminating or offsetting all greenhouse gas emissions originating in the town by the year 2050 or earlier."
There you go.
So I think we could change that to say commit to a goal of eliminating.
There you go. Yes, yes. And I'm good, good with that.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
And Emily, you've come twice, you've done a great job both times. And I, I understand.
Thanks.
I'm the one, I'm the one that's giving you a hard time, but understand, underneath us all, it's like, I don't know whether we're going to do everything that it's going to take to get to net zero by 2050, but I'm pretty sure if we don't put some teeth into the things that we say we're going to do and we're serious about it, we're not going to move as far in that direction as I think we are capable of moving because it's all mushy words and it all sounds good, but it's, there's no traction. So...
Yep.
Maybe counterintuitively, part of my argument is not against where we're headed, it's that we're not headed there in my view in a way that really gives us the traction to get serious about it.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, hopefully they will accept our, our edited letter.
Are you, are you able to redraft this with what we've said here? Were you, are you comfortable taking a crack at it or, yes? Okay.
Yeah, I'll just send it to Brittany again.
Okay. And then for what it's worth, if we can make those changes, I don't anticipate I'll have any objections to doing it. So...
Okay, I will move then to commit, to redrafting this letter so that paragraph number three reads, "Commit to a goal to eliminate..."
No, I want to, I want to see the words, that you're not redrafting, Emily's going to redraft it. If you want to move that we will take this up again when it's redrafted, that would be fine.
I'll just go ahead with my motion then, Gus. You can do what you want.
Okay.
So that, my motion is to change the language of this letter, number three, to commit to a goal to eliminate. And in the following paragraph, as also requiring in the grant application documents, this will confirm that the town of Medfield is committed to strike the word meeting and replace it with the word addressing the remaining climate leader.
So for sure, that's good input to Emily. Do you have a second?
No, I mean, I want, the responsibility should be confirmed. Otherwise, we're setting a precedent that we pick to choose to upgrade, to edit documents when it's coming from groups. So I, I agree with, and Emily, hopefully you don't mind making those edits. You get them wrapped back over. There's no deadline that, that we're messing, if we vote on this on April 29th or sign it on April 29th, does that...
As far as I know, I'm not aware of that being a problem. Kelly, do you know?
We're still actively reviewing, but if it, I mean, I know that we have a bunch of other applications in review, so hopefully that'll be fine.
Yeah. Can you come in and review the document yourself and sign it?
Sure, yeah.
I mean, I, I support that.
You can, you can vote to authorize Gus to sign it pending Emily's changes.
Yeah.
And then we can get it over sooner.
Sure. Then as long as, then as long as Emily's changes are good with me, we'll be, if you didn't have the, here's the way to think.
I'm a professional document editor.
Excellent, excellent. If the two of you don't have as strong an objection as I have had to the wording of this and you're comfortable just saying, "Listen, Gus, if you want to change it and it'll make you feel better, go ahead and take it. We're not talking about changing the intent of the document, so we empower you to make that shot and sign it."
Yeah, totally fine.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Okay, all right. Thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
All right. And then if we're doing it that way...
Thanks, Kelly.
Then if, if we're doing it that way, Emily, when you have it, you can give it to Christine and Christine the next, it doesn't have to wait till the 29th.
Yeah, we can get it done later.
So that's fine. Okay, good. Uh, let's see. Number four. Some more complicated one than we usually get. Okay, number four, Greg Test on behalf of Memo to request approvals for Discover Medfield Day on September 27th. A, to use town-owned land at Mittinghouse Pond, portions of North and Ferry and Uppam Road, and the use of Jane's Avenue and Townhouse parking lots for the kids' alley rides, closing Jane Avenue, Jane's Avenue to Cars, and issuing or approving a common victor's license for the event. For anybody who's not following every one of our meetings, this is the follow-on conversation to the previous discussion that we had with Greg and Russ Halcy where they were looking for approval initially with a plan to hold at least a good part of Medfield Day on the Dale Street grounds so that they could do the kids' alley because the Montrose School can't make their property available. That discussion revolved around trying to maintain the traditional location of Medfield Day close to the center of town and not either move it way away from the center of town or split it apart in a way that it would be difficult for kids to do the kids' things and the adults to do the adult thing. So this is a modified plan. Greg, if you want to come up and tell us what you did.
So like you said, we brought up the option if we could use Jane's Avenue, shut it down, which we've never done before to my knowledge. Then we have access to the, the two parking lots that the town owns and we went out, we measured and we can get the kids' alley to fit in there. And the, the booths that were on Montrose for the vendors will also fit on Jane's Avenue as well. So all that will fit, we'll be able to keep it downtown. Chief of Police is on board with it and I think the fire chief is on board with it. I don't think Russ has checked with the DPW yet, but I think that'll probably be okay. So we really don't see any major changes. It might even work out better for the future, who knows? You know, we never know where Montrose goes. Whatever they're going to do with construction, you know, they, we, this may be the norm. I don't know. We'll have to see. You know, I personally didn't like Dale Street, Dale and Memorial, as we talked about in the meeting, it floods with all the rain we're getting recently. And if we had that in September and all happened and stopped on Friday, we'd still be using the canoe up on the, on the, on the grounds there. So I, I think that's a good decision. It worked out for, for everybody, I think, for the town. And hopefully, you know, the people, the biggest challenge is going to be parking. You know, this is a new thing, we had parking down, we've lost parking spots at Montrose and, and, but we may have to take advantage of the school parking lots. One of the things we're looking into, we don't know if it'll pan out, is we're going to look at, can we use Hinckley and maybe have shuttles? You know, at least for the vendors, they drop their stuff off, go park their car and they get a free ride back. We're looking into that. I mean, one of the other things I told Russ to check into is, is there any way, any objections if we, you know, go to the Council of Aging? They have a, a small shuttle bus. Kind of bring them on board and get them some more visibility to the people. Things we can look at going down the road. But other than that, I mean, I don't know, what you read was moving it, but Russ gave me this. He had all these other things in here. I don't know if you're going to vote on those tonight as well.
I think, I think there's two things Russ usually asks for signatures on. One is the application and one is the victor's license.
Yeah.
And I would assume that if we approve this tonight, that we would include those signatures as part of what we'll do at the end of the meeting.
Okay. And we're still working on Eversource to see if we can put the banners up? Okay. All right. Other than that, any questions?
No, I mean, I, I'm thrilled. I, I was one of the first vocal people that, I think, keeping it downtown, keeping it...
I do too, yeah.
So I'm, I'm thrilled that we were able to, if we can vote tonight, to make some So I'm thrilled that we were able to, if we can vote tonight, to make some changes. And it's even that much tighter, right? I think it's, it's great.
Right, yeah.
I think it's a much better location for memo and for the Medfield Day, so I'm glad that you were able to make it work.
Right. I personally think it might end up being all the time. I don't know, we'll see.
Yeah, I think this could be your new standard going forward.
Yeah.
The only comment I had, and thinking about it, is I know that when we were talking about Dale, we were talking about, talking to the Butters, because it was a new thing for them.
Right.
The only thing I would think is possibly Jane's Avenue, because this is literally a shutdown.
Right.
It might be used, there's not that many of them, so that's the good news, but it might be useful just to touch base with them.
We're going to get to them, but I think the chief said in her, one of her comments, she was going to let, let the, the people know ahead of time that it's going to be shut down. I don't know if it's a formal letter or how they do it, but that was part of the conversation.
Somewhere, maybe from a community relations standpoint, when the chief lets them know it's going to be shut down, somewhere in there, there should be a shadow conversation that says, yeah, I just want to let you know we're doing this.
No, we're going to reach out too. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
See, motion?
Move to approve the memo request to use the land in the downtown as outlined in the discussion.
Okay. And also, and also the common victor's license.
And I think, and subject to successful negotiations with Eversource on the banner. And, and I guess with DPW, as indicated, that hasn't been done, so.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thanks, Eric.
Okay. Okay. Next, we have Greg Soder to discuss damage at the Dwight Derby House and a vote to authorize $5,500 in expenditures related to repairs from the municipal building stabilization fund reserve to cover those repairs.
It's Jeff, Jeffrey with a G.
Jeff, uh.
Jeff Soder.
You said Greg.
You said Greg.
Oh, okay.
It happens all the time.
I didn't have my glasses.
It happens all the time. I just corrected for the record, since we have the whole world watching tonight. Jeff Soder, five, Judah Perlein in Dover, president of the Friends of the Dwight Derby House. And we're asking you.
I'm really of Medfield, although.
Yes, I lived 30 years, since you brought it up. I lived 30 years in Medfield, and I was, I'm the last surviving member of the Water and Sewer Board that sewed the entire Pine Needle Park area. Lee Beveridge and Peyton March are both gone. Anyway, I felt obligated to come to you tonight because we had a circumstance that was never foreseen 28 years ago when the Friends of the Dwight Derby House was formed, and we operate on a lease agreement with the town. But on, and I'm, I'm just going to give you a very quick history. I know you've got a lot of business to conduct. But on March 2nd, I arrived to meet a high school student and his mother, and found wood chips all over the floor, something that was clearly not the work of a field mouse. And just horrified. I felt like the people that run Notre Dame Cathedral when they saw it burning, frankly. I mean, because it's such a rare building. So I got a trap, set it up on the third floor, and fortunately, the next day, we did catch the offending animal, which was a gray squirrel. But unfortunately, the worst damage was to the, was four of the five windows on the third floor. Some of those windows are 200 years old, and the glass may be even older. And even if you've ever read our lease, it requires that everything that we do be done in accordance with the National Park Service preservation requirements. And finding a preservation requirement is like, you know, trying to find a needle in a haystack. Fortunately, we had someone already doing work on the other improvements that we've done. And he's done work on the Old North Church in Boston and things like that. He's, he's a preservationist, preservationist. But it's, it's an emergency in my frame of mind, not just because I'm the president, because there was so much damage that I was afraid in a, maybe a bad thunderstorm, high winds, or pops, perhaps during the hurricane season, that a high wind could even suck some of those panes of glass out. And those panes of glass, it's 100 years old, they have bubbles and irregularities, and you can't, they're not replaceable. So I thought you should know that, and I am admittedly embarrassed to ask you to take $500 out of the stabilization, uh, $5,500 out of the stabilization fund. But I feel it's an emergency, and if this hadn't happened, we would have had the Dwight Derby House in better condition. And my board is here to nod in agreement. We would have had it in better condition than it's been in 15 years, because some improvements were overlooked, and we finally got them addressed this year. And I'm not going to go through the list, because again, you're busy. But I don't know how that squirrel got in there. Everything was boarded up and sealed, but it happened. And we have liability insurance, which is required in the lease agreement, but we can't buy property insurance because we don't own the house. The town does. So, you know, I brought this up with Frank. I said, well, you know, what are we doing? This was, this, coming to you tonight was, was the end result. And you also have a right to know that going forward, we're just going to have to be supervisient, beating the tariff problem, which we have going on. These are made in China, by the way, but these are ultra-high-frequency rodent deterrents. And one of, one of our board members has them on her house in the Cape. She says she's never seen anything with a long tail in the house.
I thought he was going to turn on to see if any of us actually.
So, you know, we're doing the best we can, and as far as we can tell, you know, the house is tightly sealed. So if you have any questions, I'll entertain them, but.
Are there, do you have to trim back any of the trees near the house to prevent them from getting access to it?
Well, I did that. I've, I've been president less than two years, but the first year, I think it was Bob Autry, who's, who's a volunteer, and his wife is on the board, said that branch is too far over, and I got Ed Hinckley to come help us out, so that a rodent couldn't just jump off the branch onto the roof.
Right.
But they can find their way up anyway. They're insidious. So the answer is we're doing the best we can.
Right.
And, you know, we have different people with different, you know, backgrounds and everything, taking a look at things to try to prevent this type of thing.
Did you catch the, find the squirrel or did you go back out?
You know, that's a, that's a good question. Yes, yes.
I was asking if you had a similar situation, flying squirrels.
What I didn't tell you, what I didn't tell you was on the.
The blind end.
Yeah, my mom had those.
What I didn't tell you was on the way to the third floor, the cage caught on the, something, I don't know what it was. And I fell harder than I've ever fallen in my life, and I have fractured two places in my right hip, and torn the ligaments off the shoulders. So if you ever develop a purple heart for matiorious service, I'd like to be on the list.
Thanks.
But I'm going to be okay, and I did catch the squirrel the next day, and it's been removed. So, you know, it, other than the damage, which, preservation is so incredible. The man that we have in mind analyzed the windows, and he says, I'm going to have to make tooling to replicate the grill work in there. You can't just go buy this stuff at a, at a DIY store or something like that. And I'm, when I feel better, I'm going to repair the, the entry door. One of our two entry doors, which fortunately is a Marvin door, and is not historic, was destroyed, and the replacement value of that door alone is $11,000, not including prevailing wage work to put it in. A lady from Marvin has been helping me. She sent me some grill work, and I think we can save it ourselves. So I'll save the lower door, but the top five, the windows, I'm going to have to ask you for some help. Okay?
Robert Autry, and I'm Carol Ann.
Do you mind jumping up to the mic? Just so people at home will hear what you're asking.
Do I have to stand up?
Yeah, please.
Or you can grab the mic, you can take the mic off and sit down.
I know what I was going to say.
Otherwise, we'll get messages here that they can't hear.
On the Marvin, on the Marvin doors, there are two of them, $11,000. So that's $22,000. And the squirrel did damage to both doors. The main door was damaged more severely. And I would just like to say that in terms of the cost of getting the house back to where it was before the squirrel attacked it, Jeff has done exemplary work on repairing the grills and finding out, you know, how he could do it. And I've watched the work that he's been doing, and he's a restoration expert in his own right. So he is saving a lot of money by doing that on his own time, using his own skills at, in his own expense. So I would just like to support Jeff in what he's saying here. I've seen the damage to the windows, and the squirrel is very hungry for old wood.
Expecting, by the way, which is why she wanted to get out.
Where's the nest?
Well.
She didn't build a nest inside.
No, we don't have a nest, but.
Hope not.
So.
Actually, this is a plug for History Weekend. We're having a party at the Dwight Derby House on the evening of the 25th from 6:30, 8:30. If you want to, and you approved the liquor license. So if you want to join me, I'll give you the long version of what I just told.
Squirrel stewards.
And you too, Mark.
Squirrels.
Thank you very much. Are we also?
Will Pete, Pete, any questions?
No, no. Jeff and I have talked about this before tonight, so. I guess the one question, the, the one issue that does arise in my mind, Jeff, from the, the lack of insurance was that, I mean, if the Dwight Derby House were to burn down, is there, is there no property damage?
That's covered in the lease. It says if it burns down, we're released from our lease.
Yeah, but in terms of, apparently, there's no insurance on the property damage.
No, no, we, the town carries the insurance.
Pardon?
The town carries the insurance on the buildings.
Okay, but this is just too, too little damage to put through the insurance?
Yeah. Our deductible, our deductible's $5,000, so.
I mean, basically, we have artifacts, and they'd just be considered lost, I guess. We couldn't afford to insure them.
I was just curious about the insurance.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway. I had two things. One, the fifty.
I did have one more question, could I ask?
Oh, oh, yeah, sorry.
Jeff, how many hours a week do you think you spend on the Dwight Derby House?
I work seven days a week for the Dwight Derby House, and easily over 40 a week.
Thank you for your helping the town.
It's, it's not a job for somebody who's employed elsewhere. I'm, well, the board knows this. I'm the president, the curator, the lead tour guide, and rodent control officer.
I had two things. One, one's practical, is budget. The $5,500 coming out of the stabilization fund, we have it.
Yes.
So there's no issue, there's no, we don't need warrant committee reviews or any, anything around that. We have it, we can approve it, and they'll get it.
Yes, this is the, the emergency fund that we have for anything that happens during the year. You have authorization to appropriate that. Whatever the remaining balance is at the end of the year, it goes back to the fund.
The other thing I have is, again, it's another comment, and, and I'll, I'll suggest that both you and you tonight have shown me, but certainly the public, something about commitment to this town, commitment to this town's history that is valuable. In some way, I don't want to sound like I'm a pushover when people come looking for money, because Dick's coming up, and he's going to be looking for money. But.
It's a good thing I went before you.
But my, my point is, and this, this is something that I think about a lot, is that the only reason we have some of this stuff, you know, if the Dwight Derby House, if nobody had ever stepped forward with the Dwight Derby House, the town would have had a really old house. We would have looked at it and said, it's a real shame that it's fallen down, because it's a really important house, and it would be great to preserve it. And we have the Dwight Derby House, and tip of the hat to Dick. The reason the Kingsbury, the Kingsbury Grist Mill looks like it does, instead of some ramshackle thing that you, you know, you put a little iron grate around and plant a few daffodils in front and say, you know, 100 years ago, 200 years ago, this really looked good. Look at the picture. Let's hope this thing doesn't collapse and we have to do. The reason that we have those things that are town assets, and, and including the Medfield Historical Society, and where they're located, is because people in this town, independent of whether the towns bought, put money into it, have just said, this thing is important to the town, and it's important to us, and we're willing to put our own time and effort into it. The fact that you came here as humbly as you did to say, is there any way the town can give us $5,500? I guess the hidden thing was, because we signed a lease, and I guess if you say no, we're going to look at each other around the table and go, so how much can we all kick in to get $5,500? That's, that's an incredible commitment to the town. And I know, I'm usually, I'm usually the finance hawk. I don't like to spend money we don't have to spend, but this is money that abs, absolutely the town needs. It's, the only reason we can keep all of these things going is because the bulk of the weight of the effort. Sometimes, it's work that takes place for what you'd otherwise have to spend money on. It's because of people like you, you, and you're not the only one in this room right now. It's because people like you stepped forward and said, this is important enough. I'm not doing a cost-benefit analysis. I'm not asking to be paid for my time. This is just something that's important to me to make sure that this town has. So when you come, and I hear that, there's a piece of me that's almost embarrassed that you have to ask that way.
I was embarrassed to ask.
Well, I know. And, and I, you shouldn't be.
Okay.
Um, you know, speaking personally, I'm delighted to be able to do this. All right. We have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right.
Excellent.
Good.
All right.
All right. Next is, Dick, Dick's all excited now. He's the next one.
Boy.
Here, I thought he was going to be hard-nosed, and he's, look at, did you hear what he said?
Looking for a million dollars out of the state. We've had our challenges at the mill, but it's, again, it's an all-volunteer crew. But I want to do a toss-out to Jeff here first. Where, one thing he also didn't feel, I guess, comfortable mentioning was, the Dwight Derby House needs more volunteers. And there's easy ways to volunteer at the Dwight Derby House. We have a plethora of volunteers at the grist mill, because all we ask for is a person's time, money, or materials. Everyone has one of those three things, and they're all extremely valuable when it comes to historic preservation. We have people that say, I've got an old tractor in my backyard. Is it something of interest? I've got some, some hand tools. We, we collected a lot of hand tools at the grist mill, because frankly, young adults need to see that a saw can actually operate with your arm and your hand. If they're not battery-powered, et cetera, et cetera. So shout out to Jeff for what he's doing, and the rest of the committee, by the way. He's supported by some great people. And they are looking for more committee members. They're also looking for anyone of skilled, in a, in a skilled position, or even of a position to offer some assistance there. And I'll make the plea for Jeff, because I think he, he was shy enough not to, not to make that plea. But anyhow, moving on to the, the grist mill. What we're looking to do is put in fence railings. It's a, it's a, it's a cedar fence, but don't let that deceive you. The, the poles that, that hold up the railings are made of locust wood. Totally different animal, much harder, indestructible, really hard to cut with a handsaw or an electric power saw. And they are fine. It's the cross members, just the, that we are looking to replace. The, the railings have been leaned on. I have, I have photos of the broken railings, but the, the kids, they like to climb up on the fence, so they have been. And when the, when the cedar railings get over 15 years old, they give way. Generally, the ends snap off when you put any weight on them. So approached the fence company, spoke to Christine about it, and got a, got a receipt for $1,000 for 30 railings, and would like it to come out of the funds that have, we have an account for the grist mill. And if, I might talk about volunteers. 30 years ago, when we had a, before, single stream recycling, we actually had a canister that people would put their nickels, nickel bottles and cans in. Once a week, the DPW would take those down to the liquor store and get, cash them in and bring a check to, well, I was told by the former committee, 30, 40 years ago, and Mike Sullivan, that there is an account at Town Hall with $1,500 in it for these recyclable nickels that have been collected over the, over the years. When I got down to meet the ladies that are in charge of accounting many years ago, they laughed when, when I said $1,500. And she, she said, this account hasn't been touched in 35 years? I said, okay, $5,000. And they all laughed in the room again. And she said, compound interest, Mr. Judge? Have you ever experienced that? And I said, yeah. And she said, well, it's, also, a check has been deposited every week for many, many years. So I said, okay, $10,000 in the account. They all laughed again, and she said, you're almost halfway there. From the nickel donations, there's over $23,000 in the account. So that's how we got our start. Thank you for, for everyone that was involved with that, because we were able to acquire or have built a water wheel, and to, to bring the place back to life, and, and make it the, the, one of the prides of Medfield, next to the Dwight Derby House. Our, always our pursuit is not to cost the town any money. And for the last 15 years I've been involved with this, no taxpayer money has been used on the grist mill to bring it back to life. The, the extent of it, though, I do need to say, thank you for the DPW. Over the years, they've come through with, with different things that we needed. Fantastic. So I'm here tonight to ask for your approval for, or to get a purchase order, Christine?
You just need approval for the, the actual fence work that you were doing.
Okay.
To get you the money, that's not a problem.
And, and that's it. We're, we're taking out the broken railings and putting new railings in. I wish they were less expensive, but they're $1,000, and they'll be coming out of the nickel fund.
And you said 30 of them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Some of them are on their way, and so we're just going to.
Get ahead of it.
Yeah, yeah. But thank you for your support on the, on the grist mill. It's been, it's been great. We have so many people. We have so many people still coming out to donate their time and effort from class projects to, to the Boy Scouts, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm glad that it's on a lot of the town photos. We get Christmas cards. You know, half of the Christmas cards are in front of the grist mill. And that wasn't intended, but I wanted to let everyone know that it's, it's, you own it. And come by and visit it. Make sure you walk down around back because it's a whole slice of life down behind the mill that you've been passed 1,000 times. But until you walk down behind the mill, you're, you'll see two streams. You'll see bridges. You'll see a slice of paradise. So please come visit the grist mill. And for the, for History Weekend, we'll be participating. Buy your ticket in advance if you could, and that way we regulate the traffic flow. Thanks.
No, I think we're good.
No, I'm fine. I'll make a motion to approve the $1,000.
I have just one, one, one question. No, it's just, there's the fence that's along the pond. And then there's the fence down below. So you're going to replace all the, both the fence that's below the mill and the fence that's along the water?
Yeah, our primary objective is the fence that's along the water. Because right now it's a safety issue. There're railing missing and it's just not, just not right.
So the 30, well, I guess maybe the other way I could ask the question, the 30 is not enough. That literal, you're, you're not going to be able to literally replace all of the.
Correct. Some of them are in decent condition. We'll either use there or we'll, we'll transfer over to where another one is broken. We're just, we're going after the worst offenders that are, and starting with the ones that are on the ground, just broken.
I already moved.
Oh, you did a motion, okay.
Authorized $1,000.
I think we're just approving the project, right?
Yeah.
And I'm only asking that because it's got to be whatever it costs you to do that. I'm guessing if it was $1,030, we wouldn't be.
Yeah, we'll take care of that.
All right, not a million.
Second?
Second, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, Dick.
Thanks.
Those pesky zeros, you know?
As an aside, when Dick said, well, now we have single stream recycling, I've made this comment before. You still get a nickel for deposits on cans and bottles. We can still raise money that way. And putting it in the, the single stream recycling, for all you know, it goes on a ship and it gets buried in a landfill somewhere. So that's, that 20, if you could earn $23,000 doing it 20 years ago, that $23,000 can still be earned now going forward. That's one of my pet peeves is watching all these deposit cans and bottles going into the, the recyclers. I'm pouring my stuff in on the other side. Anyway. Next, we have Barbara Mayer Transfer Station and Recycling Committee to discuss the repair cafe.
We hope to have a repair cafe, which is a service where people offer to repair things for other people and free. And, you know, just people come, come for it. This is something that Mass DEP has been pushing since before the pandemic. And because of the pandemic, it sort of got slower start, but they're pushing it again. Part of their reduce, recycle, and reuse push, they're, it's the reuse aspect. Repair cafes and fix-it clinics are taking off around the state and are held in many, many towns through, throughout the state. It's actually a breath, an international grassroots kind of movement. In Massachusetts DEP trying to promote it. They award points towards grant money if you have a repair cafe or fix-it clinic in your town. Or if you contribute substantially to a repair cafe or fix-it clinic in another town. And they also specify how much of the grant money that you get, you can spend on fix-it clinics or repair cafes. Libraries in Boston, I think all the branches at different times, sort of rotating, have, on different Saturdays, have fix-it clinics. And a lot of the towns around, I mean, I've been to one in Ashland and we've sort of combined with Westwood. Framingham has Matic. I hear Wellesley does. Walpole wants, wants to get started. We were actually asked if we could invite them to ours, just, well, no, we weren't asked to invite them. We were asked to incorporate them and it's sort of like, wait a minute, it's already three towns that are trying to, to do this. So I was specifically asking to put up signs for this. Sustainable Medfield Transfer Station and Recycling Committee in town. Westwood Environmental Action Committee and Dover Recycling Committee are all trying to collaborate on this. And there's concern whether, whether the waiver, no waiver, as Mark says, no waiver would, would cover if somebody were to get something repaired and then there were a liability issue beyond. But this is something that, that's being done throughout the state. And I, I'm hoping that we can put up our signs and advertise it and have Medfield Transfer Station and Recycling Committee involved with that. If that's not all right, I guess, Sustainable Medfield, which is not a town board, so it doesn't reflect on the town, would like to carry through. And I had called, I had submitted something to the Hometown Weekly on Sunday. And I wrote them and said, hey, please don't print that because this issue has come up. But, and we do have some signs that we've printed and we can X out Transfer Station and Recycling Committee if, if we need to pull town responsibility out. But, but I, you know, I don't know. Oh, you've even got the flyer.
Mark, do you want to, the, my understanding on this has to do with the waiver. To distill it down, my understanding is that as town council, you basically pointed out that when a town committee is designated as a sponsor for an event, that brings a certain, that exposes the town to liability by virtue of that sort of formal connection of a town committee to that event. In the, in the event that somebody gets hurt along the way, we all know, we all know lawyers will look, except for Mark, will look for the biggest pockets to go after. And chances are the town is going to pick, is going to be bigger. It's going to be a bigger pocket maybe than some of these, you know, public groups that are just private members doing the things they want. So we could easily be a target. Is that?
It's the flip side, which is the perception that you could have participants sign a waiver and that would insulate from liability. The problem with that, Pete, you're welcome to join in, since I know you have experience as much as I do. It's not like somebody's going on a trip or some activity that they're participating in. They can only bind themselves and perhaps minors. They can't bind others and you're talking about commodities that are out in commerce. So worst case scenario, somebody gets seriously injured, burned, electrocuted, cut, what have you. It was never party to any of this, but it's because of this particular allegedly appliance device, what have you, that was repaired at this event. There is no way you can insulate from that kind of liability effectively. So that's, that's my concern.
Is there a town insurance that covers it?
You would have to check into it. It's not, it's not an insurance that we typically cover. It would be products liability, completed operation, something that we don't typically carry in our insurance.
No, and the, and the people doing the work aren't employees of the town. They're not, you know, they're not actual volunteers serving as special employees. So I would, I would have to check on that.
I think the concern, when I saw this come up as a late agenda item, I think this, correct me if I'm wrong here, Mark. I think the concern would be somebody brings a toaster to be repaired and they go home and they think it's working. They plug it in, they leave the room, and unfortunately, it's not working to their standards and it now catches fire. That, an attorney is going to say to that homeowner, what happened here? Well, I brought it somewhere, I got it repaired. An attorney being an attorney, my younger brother is one, they're going to look at every, every aspect that they could go after. The manufacturer, they're going to go after whoever recently repaired it. They're going to, oh, the town was behind it. And it doesn't mean that we're guilty, but they're going to get some, they're going to barter to get some form of money just so we don't have to go to trial and be part of this whole thing. And so to me, that, that is a concern that even though it's a well-intended event in the world we live in, I mean, I look at so many of the disasters that have happened and I, I mean, I, it was how many years ago? That horrible fire in, in Rhode Island? And they were going after Budweiser, they were going after who made the bar stools. It was ridiculous who they went after, but they did because they knew that they would get people to pay something so they could walk away. And, and so when I heard this afternoon, I'm like, as well-intended as this is, for, have the town associated with it is too much risk. And, and if there's a private group that wants to do it, and that's on the private group, but to ask the town to, to be put at risk when we know something's being brought in that's broken and then maybe it's not fixed to the standards that everyone thinks, that's the only reason I, I could not support this in good faith.
Does it matter where it's fixed? I suppose.
Do my grabbing the mic only because I guarantee at home no one's going to hear this. I, I apologize, Greg.
Does it matter where it's fixed? Like suppose the other group takes it. So now it's not the town committee doing it. Does it matter where it's getting, what if it was repaired on town property?
No, I think it's the intent that if we're supporting the group that's coming in to do this, it's, it's a, it's a Medfield group that says, come on in. And now we're asking Medfield residents, we're the group that's associated with, if something happens, even though you may bring it somewhere else to be fixed, the question, and I'm not going to be an attorney, but a lot, like where did you bring it initially?
No, I understand that, but if, if the town committee is removed from the equation.
Right.
So it's not the town committee, there's no, there's no town employees. It's a volunteer committee now doing it. But what if they did it on, in a town building or on town property? Does that come in?
As long as the town isn't active promoting it, there's probably minimum liability.
Okay, all right.
And in this case, as a matter of fact, it's not being carried out on town property. It's being at the church, it's Church of the Advent, so it's not even on town property.
Where is it being held?
It's at the Church of the Advent.
Oh, Church, okay.
To me, the only issue that's relevant in this situation is the fact that TESARC is the, is a sponsor of the event. That's the only thing that I see that brings the town into liability. It's not on town property. There's, you know, there's nothing, other than the near status as sponsor is the problem. I think that's the only, I think that's the only issue here.
Okay.
But I, I have a couple of questions for Mark, maybe P2. Does the fact that this is a kind of free service, does that do, does that affect the, the liability exposure? In other words, if this is being done in good faith, that doesn't have any impact?
First of all, it's always after the fact determination and which may or may not have some connection to reality. It's all relevant, relative. And, and those, those considerations, I mean, she's, Eileen was correct earlier. I mean, people reach out, in my own experience, my first third of my law practice, law years was spent doing personal injury, both as a plaintiff and a defendant. The very first case I cut my teeth on was a suit. We were defending a land, an older woman who rented out her house in Cambridge. There was a horrible fire and her tenants, as I recall, there were multiple deaths. The suit was against her for failure to maintain a safe apartment. It was determined during an investigation that there was a, a new Sears television set on the premises. Sears was sued. There was evidence of overheating. There was other electrical, there was a litany, a list of defendants.
Second question I have, does the fact that a state agency like DE, the state DEP, if a state agency is actually encouraging communities to carry out these kinds of activities, does that alter the liability?
No. And the state, by the way, would not be liable because of sovereign immunity, generally speaking, so.
Right, and I wasn't thinking that they couldn't be sued. I meant, does the fact that the context for why this is even happening?
No, they, they, you know, they, they come up with policies and concepts all the time without taking these types of things into account.
And then third question's for you, Barbara. You were talking about the communities that get involved in these things, get points that translate into grants. Does, does TESARC need to be a sponsor of this thing for Medfield to get credit for the fact that this event's holding? From the standpoint of this point, whatever the point system is around grants, is the spot, is the formal sponsorship of TESARC an important component of, of that?
I, I think that contributing monetarily can supplant that.
Okay, and I don't think, we're not, TESARC's not contributing, are we contributing monetarily?
Um, yeah.
Oh.
Oh, well, that's.
That's a problem.
Then, then that's a problem.
That, that is a problem?
Yeah, because it's not just taking your name off of it. If, if the committee is actually using funds to sponsor it, then taking your name off, is it just taking it, a name off it? A name only, you're still sponsoring it.
Okay.
Where did those, where did those funds come from?
They're going to come from the recycling dividends program.
Yes.
And that's under the control of TESARC?
And the DPW.
Right.
Those are due to.
Well, the only, the only things that, the only thing that has been bought was four extension cords. I was also going to get some tablecloths. And actually, it's in our, in, in this particular case, it's in our town. So, so that, we don't have to contribute anything to this particular one to, to.
Have we been, have we been contributing to other ones?
We offered to in February and Westwood didn't want anything contributed, so nothing got.
So we didn't, you know, what I'm getting at is the same, if we have exposure here, we'd have exposure there too.
We sponsored in, in February. We didn't know this was.
Yeah.
An issue.
Okay, so I was thinking the sponsorship by itself was the issue. If, I'm not, I'm trying to figure out a way to let this thing happen without us being exposed, is where I'm coming from. If TESARC were to pull out completely and, it's a little hard to do that now because it's been everywhere. So it'd probably require a public disclaimer that said, no, we're not, we're not doing anything with this. Sustainable Medfield's still doing stuff, so it's not like Medfield doesn't show up. If Med, if TESARC did pull out, that wouldn't derail the event from the standpoint of TESARC or grants or any, anything real. Is there any reason why that would be a problem?
Wait a minute, I'm wrong because we paid money for signs.
If, if this is something that's okay for you to do, it's probably a reasonable expense, although I am curious about how the budgets are controlled now, but, because some of the, something like a sign to promote an event that you're hosting, probably no problem. Something that maybe is promoting an event that you shouldn't be associated with at all is, is, that's got to do.
Well, I mean, I, I can put tape over, over the signs, but as, you know, as you've implied, there have been announcements out.
I'm at a point where I guess, I'll at least try saying, Mark, is there, what would your recommended path be? The point here is to make sure that, my, as I see it, is to make sure the town is not exposed legally for sort of a volunteer event, which is a good thing to do, but there's no, you know, for what the legal exposure is, that might be too costly for the benefit if the town's involved. That's where I'm trying to figure out the, how to untangle that knot. Is there a good, is there a path you would recommend that the town should take? So, I'm not talking about anybody else that's involved here, the town should take to reduce or eliminate. I, I understand it's a low probability risk, but if it happens, it's a multimillion dollar settlement. So, it's one of those low-risk, high-impact things that you don't try to take on if you don't have to. What would we, what would, what do you think we should do to kind of resolve this?
Let's just put it this way, if this proposal had been made, so, if, if anybody had come to me anticipating doing this sometime in the future and asked for my recommendation, I would've said, don't get involved and don't spend any town money.
For TESARC, don't get involved, don't spend.
TESARC, don't sponsor, don't, don't expend any town funds.
Yep.
Let the, let the private group do it, and good luck to them.
So, given that some probably minimal town funds have been spent, the signs that have promoted the event have suggested that the town is involved with it. Is there a way for us to unwind that between now and May third?
You can't, you can't unwind the expenditure. I suppose you can cover up or not use the signage if it's indicating some kind of sponsorship or active involvement of the town committee.
I mean, can we use the signs and, and tape over or whatever?
I would think you could do that, but somewhere, because of the number of signs and announcements that have called that out, I actually think there should be a public statement that says, we actually want to publicly announce that TESARC is not in fact a sponsor due to legal concerns. You can say, due to legal concerns of the town, you can explain it. But I, I think you'd have to actively counter, counter message everything that's gone out up till now, and then cover up the signs so you don't keep promoting it.
New sponsorship.
Yeah. I mean, I think I would be okay with, it's, it's a little murky. There's a lesson learned here that we don't wanna, we don't wanna be involved in that with the town committee, at least without getting it cleared.
And then, just a friendly piece of advice for anybody going forward, if you're inclined to do this, find another word to refer to the people acting to assist. You don't wanna hold them out as experts.
Or the repair people, yeah.
Lot of good.
Pete, is that a reasonable course of action, given where we're sitting in your view?
Well, it's, I mean, it's, it's something that is a good thing to have happen, so that we, we certainly wanna have it happen if it can. Insurance solves the, the liability risk. If the insurance covers it, then I'm not concerned, but I don't know if the insurance covers it. The other way to go is to have the private group do it, and then the town's pretty much removed from the liability.
That's the most straightforward path for me, because even if insurance, even if insurance could cover it, I don't think it does cover it at this point, because the insurance company's not aware of the, in my guess, if you get in trouble with the insurance company. And if they are aware, and if they are concerned, that translates into higher premiums. So, the town's gotta be spending money over here to enable us to do something free over there.
I did, I did just send our insurance representative a hypothetical question. So, they're used to those, so I, I should, let's see what they say tomorrow, but, yeah.
I agree with the path going forward of, it's not sponsored by a town committee, it's sponsored by a private group. If people from your committee happen to be there and you're representing your individual selves and not as part of, then, you know, we can't tell you as a private citizen what to be involved in or not. But I think it, it should be a very clear cut, where, and to your point, covering over the signage, new sponsor, no longer. Just to keep it clear, because even if we have insurance, I mean, that's why people sue, because then people know they have insurance, right? So, it costs us money when people go and do that, and that, and then, here you are trying to do a good thing, and we just want to come back and be like, eh, you know, there's a hundred dollars.
The other problem is, there's insurance, and there's insurance. You've got coverage, then you have deductibles, and you have exclusions from coverage.
Yeah.
Now, we're fortunate in having Maya, which is kind of like, not like the typical commercial insurer, but I've seen instances where they kind of behave that way. And basically, that means when you get, they get the claim in, the first thing they do is look at it from the, from the perspective, are we sure this is in, within coverage, it doesn't fall within an exclusion?
Right.
So, you could have insurance generally, and it's not covered, so.
It's like your flood being, house being flooded, but you don't have flood insurance, you only have house insurance, yeah.
So, here's what I think of here. TESARC officially needs to withdraw from the event. The event can go on, it's all, it's on, it's at, it's at Church Advent, so there's no issues. The signs, you can cover up the TESARC as a sponsor, and that's fine. You're not, you're not putting more fuel on the flame. I personally think, so I'm not sure if you guys are in agreement with it, there should be a public statement that gets put out that basically says, you know, TESARC is not in fact a, a sponsor of this event. And you can, you can word it, it doesn't, you don't have to make it sound like it's a, you know, TESARC no longer. It's not, doesn't have to be that thing. It just has to be due to legal considerations around the exposure of the town. So, people understand, it's not like, TESARC has gone rogue here, it's that it's just sort of, there's reasons, and people will get that. And I don't think it would damage the attraction of the event for people who want to participate in it.
Right.
Then, there's a, you know, there's a, probably a smarter lesson to learn going forward around what TESARC should and shouldn't do. But for this particular situation, if we did that.
I'm good with that.
So, if we can, if you can do that, then we're gonna ask you to do that. I don't, I'm not, not even gonna.
There's no vote, it's just a discussion.
We don't need to vote, this is just.
Except there is a question of using the signs, putting the signs at, at the regular.
So, originally, when Mark hadn't approved this, I did not put Barbara's request for the signs to go up because I didn't know the event was going forward. So, if we could approve the signs.
I'm happy to approve the signs, contingent on, on the group taking those actions.
Well, technically, they're being put up by Sustainable Medfield, they're not being put up by T, I mean, right? That, that clears it by, it's Sustainable Medfield asking to put the signs up for the event.
Right, right, changes to that.
Okay, got a motion of that?
Move to approve the signs.
That Sustainable Medfield is, subject to Sustainable.
The three actions we described, yep.
Okay, alright, second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara.
Thanks.
Good luck with your event.
Thank you.
Alright. Yeah, I've been looking, I've been looking forward to this discussion all week.
There are not many times in my 26 years here that I can say, somebody comes in and asks us a question and completely stumps us. But we had a college student come in a couple of weeks ago and said, what's your policy for metal detecting on land in town? And we went, huh, let's get back to you on that one.
People do it up in the state hospital all the time.
Yes, so, we thought it would be an easy discussion, and they were actually, this gentleman was actually planning on attending tonight, and we asked him to hold off because, for lack of a better term, we went down a rabbit hole. The policy that you need to have in place if you are going to allow somebody to do it on public town-owned property, like the state hospital, and, yes, this might be one of those situations where he was, probably should've just asked permission for forgiveness, not permission.
I've looked through all the last two years, it's not like it just happened last week.
But this was more wanting to do it at all of our properties. Because originally, our first thought was, is this a state hospital thing? And they basically said, no, we wanna go to all of your public properties.
It's not the good stuff at the state hospital, what else you got?
Right, and then, you know, we've been sitting around, the three of us, having this conversation of, well, what happens when they find something that is historic? And our historic artifacts are very important to us in Medfield, and we put, you know, we have a lot of committees, and we have a lot of, you know, we've put a lot of time, and you see some of that tonight. So, Brittany just wrote up a, a brief memo to you that while we thought we would make a recommendation that we need a policy, it is something that's going to require a little more investigation on our part. It's just, it's fascinating. These are really common down on the Cape, and on the beaches.
You may not have considered, or maybe you did, they don't just go back and forth with a detector. If they get a, a read, they dig a hole.
Right, so that, that also came into the discussion of what, you know, is there a policy? If they do dig up something, how do you replace it? And that this requires a lot of discussion with our historic groups in town before we could even contemplate this. But I know I had mentioned it to, to one or two of you, so I wanted to let you know what you're thinking about it. We'll come back with, with a better solution, other than right now, we're not going to allow it. And we will let the people who are doing it, let them know that we would appreciate them not doing that until we can come up with a plan, but.
Need a microphone, but what do you got, Bill?
Just a quick comment. I think about the hospital, I think, there are places where you don't want anybody digging.
Right, exactly.
You're not finding anything, nobody digging, because, so you need to have something in it that's gonna cover the, what's the condition of the soil, what are the known.
Yeah, I'd rather not anybody digging, but, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And beyond that, it's town property.
Right.
The stuff that's in the ground is town property. So, you know, what if you find Captain Kidd's treasure in the middle of, you know, it's like.
Won't be any rolling coins, that's.
Yeah, well, yeah, but I mean, there, there could be a lot of things, and, and my point is, but if you find it, it's our property.
You've got an archaeological preservation district on the whole.
Exactly.
John Thompson's showing stuff that was found here, like, you know, hand axes, things like that.
Right.
Yeah, so we just provided you tonight with just kind of a rough idea for policy, just for you to be thinking about as we're trying to figure out how to best navigate this. But it really is one of those, you know, interesting subjects that came up that we had not, at, at least had ever come across my radar in the last 26 years.
When I saw the state hospital, I kind of wondered, I'm like, well, is that cool? I don't know.
Yeah, and some towns get very specific as to the size of your metal detector, all of that. So, it's, it's definitely a little bit more involved than we first anticipated when the, when they came and asked the question at 4:25 on like a Thursday.
Even, even leaving aside historic stuff. So, somebody, somebody says, gee, I'm gonna, you know, there was a, there was a Belle Forge performance on Sunday, and I show up on Sunday night with my metal detector, and I find, you know, a diamond necklace. Finders keepers, and it's like, that, that's probably not what we wanna do, even for, you know, just lost property.
Can you repeat that gene left? And then, if a dog found it.
Yeah.
It ate it.
So, I mean, there, I, I see a whole, I, I mean, I understand total restrictions, that's, well, then, nobody's gonna look, and nobody's gonna find, nobody's gonna be better off. But I don't understand why it would be really, really important to the town to make sure that we are, you know, you know.
Yeah. Right, it's just, it's, yeah.
Or just a heads up, the flip side of that, there's actually an activity out there where they go around with ma, large magnets, and they throw them into water, bodies of water, and, and whatever those happen to bring up, so.
Medfield's famous for that. I met a guy in New Hampshire.
Are you serious?
Really?
Name of his street is down the street, Sproul, his family, and we were chatting. And he was telling me what he did. He goes, yeah, there was this bridge in Medfield. I used to tie a rope across, and he'd go diving, he'd be clipped on. All kind, guns, knives, saves, tools, you name, he went down the list. I said, where? At some little town you've never, probably never heard of. I said, well, try me. It's on Route 27. I said, I think I know where you're, give me the name of the town. Medfield, I said, I know exactly where the bridge is going, in a sure going. The stuff he pulled out of there, and think about it, there's no houses, there's no lights. What he found in there, and it's probably still there, and he hasn't done it for years, it's old or not, but he was, it was phenomenal, I find.
There's new knives and saves.
There's this whole underground group of people doing things that I have no idea about. I can do that with the building more.
I'm disappointed the guy with that motorized hang glider never came back for this, for his airstrip on the south of hospital.
Careful what you wish for.
So, no vote needed.
Alright, no vote there, okay, but that's a great. I, I can't believe people left and didn't stay for that particular conversation. Alright, next, vote, no, we already did that. Vote to authorize $9,700 in expenditures from the municipal building stabilization fund reserved to pay for the FAF building structural assessment.
So moved.
Oh, there you go. Do you wanna explain?
No, well, I, I think we're okay. This looked like it was just a bill. Didn't we already approve this?
Uh, we didn't approve it, we talked about it. The work was done back in November, right after Arrow Street made the recommendation. We hired our own company to go in, they did the structural assessment, we provided the ladder. This is one of those, the bill went to every department, and everybody said, not me. Because nobody had the funds to pay the $10,000, so it ended up on my desk, so.
So, administratively, who approved the contract being issued? Just, I'm not.
We didn't even do a contract, we ordered them out on an emergency basis to, to do the structural assessment.
So, it was kind of out of the town administrator's office, go do it, it's an emergency, they did it. And the bill came in, no department takes advan, takes responsibility, so.
Everybody walked away from the table.
Okay.
Alright, there's a motion already, so I will second.
Yep, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
I'm so used to the motion being read, this is rather quick, just boom, boom.
Right, Pete, Pete's getting tired. Vote to sign the 40B Technical Assistance Grant Award of up to $10,000 for, is it Winder or Winder? Winder Estates at 86 Plain Street from the Massachusetts Housing Partnership.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
That one I can live with, with no discussion. Vote to sign the Maya Health Insurance Rate Sheet for July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. It has 16% plus.
The 16.92%. I did have a great meeting with the Public Employee Committee, and we have agreed to offer two additional low-cost limited plans to try and offset the increase in that cost for anybody who wants to switch to the more limited plan. So, we're all set, ready to go.
So, Chris, by signing the sheet, are we, are we just signing our approval on it? Is that what it is?
You're just authorizing me to, to continue the insurance, yeah.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, next is approve. Vote to sign the contract for exterior painting at the center at Medfield with ATE Painting LLC for $19,850.
So moved.
So, they painted in a specific part or the whole outside?
Needs a hole outside.
Any, any part of the wood exterior.
Yeah.
Well, that's pretty good.
And included the fence, right?
Yeah.
They're doing some repairs to one thing.
Yeah, they found some soft spots in the woods they're repairing as well.
That's a good price. I second that.
It is, point out, all those in favor? Aye, so that's approved, that's to be completed by May 30th, this month, just to, just so you know. Next one is vote to sign the contract amendment with Beta Group Incorporated for the COA Garage/Beta Contract Amendment, increasing the original contract by $5,900. This also has a completion date. No, it doesn't, disregard.
What's that thing here?
It had to do with the fact there was more environ, or stormwater.
There's some stormwater, and it triggered the Board of Health regulation, and the Board of Health needs to review it as well. So, we need them to represent us in front of the Board of Health.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, it's approved. Medfield Environmental Actions Requesting, we just did this, right?
No, no, this is, this is Climate Week.
This is closely associated with, but different. Okay, Medfield Environmental Action is requesting permission to post signs at the usual locations advertising Medfield's Climate Week. Climate Week is May 3rd to May 10th, and they're asking to post the signs from April 26th through May 10th, and to request the select, there's two, I wanna draw a line between those two because the second part is, and to request the select board recognize Climate Week by posting the flyer on the town's website and encouraging residents to attend events. I have, that piece I have concerns about. Number one, because I don't think we have a website, I don't think we have a, a page on our town website that's kind of a community bulletin board for all private groups to advertise our events. So, we don't do that for anybody else, we shouldn't do that here. And I also, again, because this is, it's not because I'm not encouraging people to participate, but asking to enlist the town in officially encouraging people to participate in a private event seems inappropriate. You know, are we gonna, it's either a blanket, everything that people want us to encourage is gonna get encouraged, or we're gonna pick and choose, and that's, that's, it's kind of, for me, is almost like a derivative of our flag policy. You just don't get to use the town that way. So, I'll.
I would move that we grant permission to post the signs.
Yeah, okay.
Second?
So, we'll, okay, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Good enough, and that back, the back part of the request gets scratched. Not because we don't like Climate Week, but because it's not appropriate for the town. Next, vote to approve one-day liquor license request for Belle Forge for the following private fundraising event, Saturday, May 3rd, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., rain date of Sunday, May 3rd. May 4th, and Saturday, October 4th, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., rain date of Sunday, October 5th. I will note those requests are all alcohol requests, not just merely malt and wine.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
You have a comment, Gus?
Thank you, it's a good thing you watch this, I just never do.
After a year of painting.
This is from Hilly Passas. Interesting discussion around the repair cafe, question to mark. I have seen such events where the expert never touches the broken object, but only verbally helps the owner repair it themselves with such a setup reduced liability.
That's a, that's a question of fact in a particular case.
So can't give you a straight answer, Hilly. I think the problem is the term expert.
Not a definitive answer, not a straight.
It's not so much people touching it, though, it's the fact that they're being represented as expert, which implies a certain level.
If they're talking somebody through something, that, that's a whole separate set of considerations, there's just no limit to this stuff.
Right.
As attorneys, we say, it depends.
Yeah.
And the worse, the worse the injuries, the more expansive and creative.
I remember years ago, getting a help, help desk call in for my lap, my desktop, that required me to open up the entire chassis, and fortunately, I think it was my son had told me, or I'd read somewhere, at the time, you had to hold the off button for an extended period of time to discharge the, the multi-volt capacitor. And, and so I'm talking to a guy in India, who's guiding me through, I was astonished. He was guiding me through opening this thing up, I knew about the button, so I knew to do that, but he's, I've got with a screwdriver, turning things around, going, this is phenomenal, there's a guy across the world who's an expert, who's not touching my computer, who's guiding me through, he can't even see what I'm doing. And, and I know there's one thing in here that could give me a pretty good jolt if I didn't properly discharge it, and I bet you there's a few other things that could do it too, but I repaired, I, I made it through.
I would add that when I got India on my tech support call, that even though we were both speaking English, we had a lot of trouble understanding one another.
This guy wasn't bad.
I didn't think they cut down on return calls.
Yeah. All right, next, vote to allow the Lions Club to host the toll booth on May 3rd with a May 10th rain date from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the North Route 109 intersection, the transfer station, and Blue Moon.
So, we're gonna do it again. Last year I had some issues, I didn't, I guess, I think I emailed the police chief, but I didn't get a response or something. Anyways, this year we have the permission from the police chief, and we're gonna have some traffic cones on North Street, she's gonna put a pedestrian sign on, at the crosswalk on Jane's Ave, and I have, let me see, I don't have, anyways, we have A-frame signs that are gonna go on all three locations, so should be all right, I think it's gonna work this.
Okay.
So it's from 9:00 to noon on May 3rd with a rain date of May 10th.
And May 3rd's that first day of Climate Week, so you'll probably get a lot of traffic through the center of town, maybe.
Hope so.
Okay.
We have an Eagle Skelton one that day.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, good luck with it.
Thanks.
Uh, let's see, next, vote to sign, nope, we already did that. Vote to indicate support for DOER EverSource Energy Manager Grant.
So this was a grant we had applied for through EverSource and the DOER, we just found out in the last couple of days that we have received the grant. It's $60,000 a year for three years to hire an energy manager. The email today from DOER, and we partnered with Susan McPhee on this, was to, we needed a vote from the select board in the next two weeks to indicate that we anticipate we will approve the grant, and then they will send the grant paperwork. We've never had to do this before, usually they send the paperwork, but I think they have a lot of applications that they didn't fund, so if a board is not interested in doing it, they wanna be able to move on to the next one. I don't anticipate any problems with this, I did see a draft of the MOU today, I do have some questions for Susan, but I, I think we should be able to work through those.
If we hire the, is, is, this is 60K per year for three years to hire an energy manager, but is that fully funding the salary, or are, is the town committing to, committing, are we, are we supplementing that salary or anything?
No, this is fully committing.
And there's, there's no, there's no fourth year commitment. I, I, this is a little bit like when we had the energy manager several years ago, the government funded it for several years, and it was actually a worthwhile thing to do, and then I think we'd actually, the only reason we didn't probably keep on with it was 'cause the guy that was doing it, if I remember, he took another job somewhere.
He took another job, actually, he ended up being the facilities manager at Vanderbilt. And then we, I think we had a really rough budget year, and we weren't able to, to fund it. This, we had to make an indication to DOER that if we were able to show that this was a successful position for us, we would consider it if funding was available.
I think that's actually, independent of this, that's been our intent, to try to, you know, there, I think you've had some thoughts about how an energy manager might fit into the staff structure of facilities management here.
Absolutely, and especially as we are getting ready to do the school project, there's just some low-hanging fruit that we really need, and specifically, an energy manager to do. We did get an earmark, I think, three years ago or two years ago for the energy manager, that was when the governor did the mid-year 9C cuts and froze the money, and we didn't have, we couldn't hire somebody for seven weeks, so we ended up using it on, I believe it was our.
The audits, the energy audits.
The audits, so we were really excited to, to get this, so I think we'll be able to sign it, but should be good.
Sorry, it's easy to say, sure, send us 60K for three years, we can be on board, but I, my point is, I actually think there's a degree of sincerity about us truly being willing to look at this down the road. Okay.
I'm so impressed that we trained somebody that could become the facilities manager at Vanderbilt University.
Heck, we got people that can meet town managers in other towns around here.
Oh, yes.
That might come up in our reports later.
So I'll move to indicate support for the DOER EverSource Energy Manager Grant.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that's approved. Next, consent agenda, only has one item, which kinda defeats the purpose of a consent agenda, but, request from Medfield Food Cover to post signs at the usual locations advertising the upcoming Stamp Out Hunger postal food drive from May 4th through May 11th.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
All right.
Aye, okay. No meeting minutes, Town Administrator updates.
Couple of things, I just wanna draw your attention to, your next meeting will be a limited agenda, and we will be looking at the Medfield State Hospital off-site intersection designs that VHB came in and presented a few months ago. They're at 50% design, and they wanna come in and show those renderings to you, so that'll be the focus of our meeting on the 29th. I know we talked a lot about it tonight, but just in case everybody doesn't know, town meeting is May 5th. The warrant report has gone to print, so look out in your mailboxes, that'll be coming soon. And then, the last is Frank has an announcement under Town Administrator Reports tonight.
So still, some, some steps to go through, but last night, the Holliston Select Board voted to enter into contract negotiations with myself, I don't know if the right grammar is there for their town manager position, so like I said, still a few, few steps to go through, but regardless of how it all shakes out, Medfield's a very special place that I feel very lucky to have worked in, and I'm sure I'll be saying this again in a few weeks, hopefully, but it really starts with the leadership that we have here in the town, and I owe Christine a lot for, and all of you as well, but thank you, more to come, and keep you posted.
Christine's getting very good at training.
Yes, she is. She's the best in the business.
So we're kind of made a town manager instead of a town administrator, huh?
Yeah, there's just a, a few little things here and there that are different about it, in Holliston's case, they just, they've, they've recently did it probably officially in December, and then I think it actually, the governor signed it in February, so, yeah.
Frank, Frank is being humble, he is going to fill the shoes of the very first town manager position in Holliston. This is a charter change, and this will be the first town manager.
It's good negotiating, Pete. It's good going, Frank.
So don't fill, don't backfill my job right away.
Now, you know what I was thinking about there, Frank, you know, if you're in your hometown, you can't really fire that guy, can you?
I hope I don't find out, I don't know.
It's not a cross that bridge. Congratulations, that's awesome.
Thank you, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Sad for Medfield, but very good for you and your family.
There was a time where a lot of municipalities required that the TA live or move to the town as a condition of employment.
Well, having, this now happened twice to us, it's like I've started rationalizing around and saying, well, you know, there is an advantage when you have people who've been here who understand our town, who have gone to other towns that, you know, in-state and actually within driving distance, because to the extent that there's opportunities for towns to collaborate on issues, it's a lot easier to get that collaboration to get started when the people that are probably gonna be most intimately involved in that collaboration start off with a fundamental level of trust and understanding of one another, so, you know, maybe our strategy should be to plant town. And we'd have a smoother operation for everybody that way. I will, I'll, I'll say that when I talk to people who, you know, talk about moving to Medfield, some people, ah, I'd say, I don't wanna do that. Holliston is actually one of the towns that I tell them, if, if you don't like this for whatever reason, that's a town you ought to look at, it's, it's a really nice town.
We love it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and.
It's about to be a very well-run town as well.
Yes, it's gonna be even nicer. All right, uh, let's see, next meeting dates, April 29th, Christine just mentioned it's a limited agenda for review of MSH intersection designs, and I think we got one other item on that one? Is that the start of the, of the South Hospital Road process?
Yes, yes, those two things, yep.
So, so we clearly have to go through some process to get to some resolution of what, if anything, we do, South Hospital Road, so just starts that discussion. Annual town meeting, May 5th, and then our next meeting, are we having a, a, a meeting before, at the start of the annual town meeting, like we usually?
We usually have a 6:00 or 6:30 posted, just in case anything comes up at the last minute, so we will, we will post that for most of the committees that night.
But I guess our next real meeting will be May 13th, deliberate meeting, I guess we could call it, okay? Select Board Member Reports.
Nothing too, too crazy. My last one, did I have our Affordable Housing Trust meeting, I think since our last meeting, yes? I had a, our last meeting was April 1st or April 2nd, I sat in the first school building committee meeting, and then there was a meeting with a few of us that sat in with the state, just to kinda go through what the, the path forward is, which was a good meeting. You know, we, we have quite a few items already done, so the question was asked towards the end, if we can get things in sooner, do we have to wait until February before we bring everyone together? And the woman said, well, it's still, a lot of things we have to do on our end even once you give it to us, but certainly if we can get you in and speed things up, we will, so, that was good. And then I sat in the MMA Civic Academy session they had last Friday, which I found really interesting, I, I, I wanted to sit in, 'cause I was kinda curious what Civic Academy is all about, and so they had, well, I wish I could remember the towns now, but they had a couple of towns represented, you know one of them, Christine, 'cause you knew the town manager.
Jen Breaker in Danvers.
Yeah, Danvers. So basically, it's, it's, it's a town coming together spearheaded by, you know, whether it be the town manager's office, or town, it's just, yeah, town manager or town administrator's office, but getting all the departments to buy in, and then it's a, it can be six weeks, it can be 15 weeks, it, it varies, but just having residents apply to go to this academy and learn more about the town, and each week, they would have one or two departments come in and give an overview, but it couldn't be the, the head of that department, they were just saying certain, and it was, there's nothing engraved in stone, but it was just really interesting.
It has been on Brittany's to-do list since she got here, it's something that she would like to launch for the town, so she's going to be taking that on.
Yeah, and I sense other towns are looking to do the same thing, great way to educate, whether it be young or old alike.
It's a great way to get people fired up about town meeting.
Yes, very much so. And then I'll be sitting in the Pitch It event tomorrow night with Medfield Foundation, we have, I think, six groups coming in to pitch for the $40,000 worth of grants that they have to give away, so look forward to that, and happy that.
We had a Medfield Foundation meeting last night, and as I, and as you just heard, there's the Pitch It tomorrow night for the Medfield Foundation Legacy Fund Grants. I had my select board office hours the first Friday of the month last week, went to Harry Pertoni's wake. Harry, I, I don't know that I, I guess I didn't know him when he was a select board member, but I, I think I probably met him through his work at the Dwight Derby House, and he was just so enthusiastic, and he turned, and he turned out to be just a delightful man to know, so.
How old was he?
He was in his 60s. 70s? The Energy Committee met last week. I saw that the Medfield High School is running a blood donor drive on, on May 11, and so I signed up for that, I encouraged my fellow residents to sign up for that, and I'm gonna announce a new initiative this evening, I'm gonna engage in, in an effort for regionalization with the town of Holliston. And not in a budding town. And that's it.
Okay. In my case, I had, as far as town stuff went, the last two weeks, plant work is kinda crowded in a fair amount, so I don't have a lot to report on anything between, since our last meeting on the town side. My wife and I did take a five-day trip up to Canada for four days of skiing at, three days of skiing at Le Mercier de Charleroi, which is right on the St. Lawrence River, northeast of Quebec City, and we had a great time there, it was, the snow was pretty decent, and it's, it's fun being up there. Coming back across the border, though, we proper, you declare what you have, right? And we, we, we told them on the way in, we didn't even bring wine, and the guy said, no, you can each bring two bottles of wine, so it's like, okay, we could've brought something. So we bought the stuff up there, we had half-eaten chicken pot pie, which I declared, two bananas, which I declared, and there was one other thing that I declared, and because I had declared these things, one of the two inspectors went into our backseat of our car, opened up the bag and said, ah, you have eggs, those are chickens, you know, those, and it's like, I saw the sign, no chickens, that's why I told them about the chicken pot pie, but eggs cannot cross the border, you said you can't bring them across the border, we only had, we bought a dozen eggs up there, we had four left. And so, I said, well, okay, I, I started ahead, and he goes, we're in the United States, you have to go back into Canada and go back through, which means you have to go back through Canadian customs, and so they call ahead, we turn around, go around the big building, get to the Canadian person, and she's sit there, and she goes, oh, oh, are you the one that we just got the call about? I was like, yeah, it was the eggs, and I was in a really good mood, I wasn't being overly serious or stra- oh, they did inform us, we were, they told us we could've been